It is now seven thirty. We are gonna go ahead and get started with our work session, so I will turn it over to our manager to introduce the items for today's agenda.
All right. Good morning, mayor and council members, members of the public. This morning, we have our police chief here to talk about the police department. As a reminder, this is a rotation. We're going through all the departments. So we wanted to spend a little bit of time understanding the service levels that are being provided by his department.
All right. So this will be an overview of the police department. The statistics on this will be from the year 2024. There are four hundred and ninety-four total employees at the police department. Department's current mission statement is, "In partnership with our community, we will provide for a general protection, safety, and well-being of all through a proactive approach in the prevention, detection, investigation of criminal activity. We will always act with professionalism and integrity to reduce crime, build trust while treating everyone with respect, compassion, and fairness." Department motto and vision, "To empathetically serve all people and relentlessly pursue justice on their behalf." The vision, "To be regarded as a leader in law enforcement through a commitment to professionalism, training, and community-oriented policing." Department leadership, under myself, there is Major David Ness, who handles Investigations Division; Major Lily Parker, who handles the Administration Division; and Major Ryan Doty, who handles the Operations Division. Under the Administration Division, they handle the Planning and Budget Section, Radio Services, which would include, like the police radios, the property and evidence, and the storage, Emergency Communications, so 911 dispatch, and then our Policy and Accreditation Programs. Just giving an overview of the calls. This is a heat map regarding the calls that our dispatch center received in 2024. Little over four hundred and fifty thousand calls last year. In those calls, just under a hundred and fifty thousand were 911 calls. Three hundred thousand plus were non-emergency calls. If you look at the heat map, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, about four o'clock are the most calls for service. And then if you also look a little bit more, not super surprisingly, but Friday night, Saturday night, you'll see an uptick around eleven to midnight hours of calls to our dispatch center.
Are the 911 calls distributed in the same way?
Yeah.
Or would the 911 be?
So 911 calls are gonna be a little bit different breakdown than this. This is just overall calls. Emergency calls tend to happen a little bit. It's a little bit harder to heat map it, but they'll be later at night, true emergency calls. We break down our priority levels in incoming the calls. So Priority zero, one, and two are high-priority calls that are going to be fights, crimes in progress, hold-up long arms, accidents where we don't know if there are injuries, or fire support calls. And then further down the line are less high-priority calls. It can be anything from, you know, an accident where there are no, no injuries, or a fight where the assailant's gone, or it could be even, you know, a dead deer. A hit deer could be part of this too. So of our calls, about seventy-five percent are considered high priority. A lot of that is due to the nature of being unknown calls when they come in.
So what would be like a Priority three or four?
What type of call is that?
Priority three or four would be somewhere along the line, a fight where the suspect is left, but they might be nearby.
Okay.
So that they'll be still a higher priority, but there's not appearance of immediate danger. A burglary where the person has gotten into the house, but they think the person is gone, but the house hasn't been cleared yet.
Okay.
Because we've talked about this, marijuana possession would be in like that low priority category?
Well, we don't get many calls, or probably any, I can't think of, where somebody would be calling on... Now, if it was a call for smell of marijuana, that would be way down on their priority trip, because there's not immediate danger for someone.
Yep. And I know we get calls on that, because when I went on a ride-along, there was a marijuana smell.
The smell part, I was thinking of something else, but yes, the smell part we get calls.
So like a neighbor would smell another house and they would...
Mostly apartment.
This one, it was in multi-family?
Mostly an apartment issue. Our Professional Standards handles the personnel complaints. Last year, there were twenty-eight citizen complaints. Twelve of those were sustained, and fifteen were unfounded. One was exonerated. The exonerated terminology means the action occurred, but it was within policy and it was justified. Internally, we had fifty-two sustained complaints, and one was unfounded. What these internal complaints, they can be a lot of different things, but a lot of them have to do with traffic infractions. Going through intersections without properly clearing them, that's the biggest one. If you're on a pursuit and you're not following the rules of the road and not making sure everybody's safe, that's usually the big one for our internal complaints.
How do you clear an interstate?
Chasing someone.
You gotta slow down and make sure that it's, traffic's not coming on. Even if your lights and sirens are on, you have to make sure that it's cleared to get through. Our Property and Evidence Section, it took in twenty thousand, little over twenty thousand pieces of evidence. Vast majority were miscellaneous, but the other-than-miscellaneous drugs is gonna be a little over three thousand items last year. With that, we also destroy a lot of evidence once items aren't claimed or they're no longer needed for trial. About thirty-five hundred drug items were destroyed. With that, that number is higher than the intake, because a lot of times narcotics investigations take a couple of years, so you'll have a buildup, and then when you are able to get rid of items, sometimes it's more than you actually took in the year before. You'll see that we also got rid of, we took in six hundred and forty-five firearms, and we were able to destroy eight hundred and thirty-one firearms. Our Operations Division, so this includes our Patrol, which is first, second. It's divided up into three watches, first, second, third. Our Homeland Security, which is basically our, what people refer to as SWAT. We refer to as SWAT. Airport Section, Traffic Unit, our Parking Enforcement, and Special Events, Neighborhood-Based Service Delivery, and our Animal Services. Traffic Unit last year rode a total of nine tickets. They gave out just under ten thousand warnings. They had five hundred and eighty-four OWI arrests, and two hundred and two crashes involved impaired drivers in 2024. We had fifteen fatal accidents resulting in eighteen fatalities.
Do we don't have any motorcycles?
I don't. I don't remember how many there were. I know there was a lot last year. I don't remember the number off the top of my head. Our Automatic Traffic Enforcement data, so they had just over fourteen thousand red light citations issued. That's about two percent less than 2023. And there was seventy-eight thousand speed enforcement citations issued. That was twenty percent less than 2023. Part of that large difference, though, is because of legislation. Between May seventeenth and June twenty-seventh, we had to pause that service, so we weren't conducting any of these ATE inspections.
Would that be twenty percent just a month?
That wouldn't be twenty percent.
It's not twenty percent, but there's a lot of traffic during those time periods. There's a couple other ideas, but I don't know exactly why it's twenty percent.
Sure. But we can't put the mobile speed cameras in certain places?
Not now, for sure. We're very limited on where we can place those.
Twenty-four locations, isn't that about right, I think?
I think it's twelve locations. And then, so we rotate six, and then next day it's the other six. If we look at the red light cameras, MLK and School Street, just off the interstate, that counted for fifty-four percent of those citations. Obviously, the I-235, Forty-Six Hundred Block counted for most of our ATE citations. A little, just under seventy-four percent.
Are we submitting more things to the state to see if we can add more of the mobile speed in the neighborhoods?
We did. We just got back that they denied our application.
All of them?
All of them.
Oh, when the number-one thing we hear from our neighborhoods are speeding.
Did they give us a basis for why?
Nope. They just, there's more to it, but basically, they just said no.
Gotcha.
Right. Chief, on the evaluation of them, the total number, I'm glad they're going down. Maybe that means there's less violations and it's safer out there. But can we look at actual speeds to measure that? Like, does the camera give us net speeds of everybody going?
Yes. So it does. It'll say, if there's a violation, it'll tell you what speed it was. If, it doesn't tell you non-citation traffic speeds, but it'll tell you the violation speed. So we could find that if you were interested.
Do we know the percentage of cars that went by that were cited?
I do not know the percentage of cars.
Yeah. I just think for future applications, those are two pieces of data that I don't know that might be persuasive.
I don't know if those cameras keep track of vehicles that do not violate the threshold that we have set.
Chief, so the, there are, how many approved mobile camera locations, did you say?
I think twelve.
Twelve. So you just rotate them among, there are how many mobile cameras? Or I guess they're tied to a squad car, but...
We have six.
Six. So I, Josh, I had one of your constituents ask why it's so often on Popeye Boulevard, I guess in that round of forty, four hundred block. Is speeding so bad there, or it's just that that's an approved location, so it's gonna...
That's an approved location, and they're basically on an every-other-day rotation right now.
So I assume the twenty-three-hundred block of South Union got denied, because they still race up and down the street that I watch every single day. And I would sure love to have that thing sitting there.
There's quite a few streets that they race up and down every single day.
It's brutal.
Yeah. So on the mobile speed camera, I thought the fourteen-hundred block of Grand was one of the places that they denied, or did they allow that to continue?
Fourteen-hundred block of Grand is denied now.
Right. Okay. So it was eleven percent of total tickets for the year?
Twenty-twenty-four.
Right. And that was just January through May, so that maybe almost accounts?
It was from twenty-twenty-four. So this year it got denied.
Oh, I thought it was good all of twenty-twenty-four. I thought it was denied.
Again, I thought it was good from twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
That's probably the significant difference.
I would guess that would be a chunk of the difference, potentially.
Okay. Well, that's unfortunate, because...
Can you apply again?
We can keep applying. I think we're gonna have to figure out why we got denied.
Right.
If there's an avenue to go for it.
Or who else maybe gets accepted?
Yeah, we're just gonna say, who else do, could we find out who got accepted? Did they allow any of them? Because if they just blanket said nobody...
Right.
We'd need an explanation, right? Like, what safety data do we need to show? Do we, I mean, if there are a bunch of folks going fifteen miles an hour over the speed limit, is...
I mean, if something you could track, like, if you put something at the twenty-three-hundred block of South Union, you could say, you could show every car the average speed that goes by. And I assume that's probably how you submit it.
We submitted a lot of data. I would be surprised if any other city submitted more thorough data than we did.
Okay.
It would be interesting if any city...
They're not interested in...
Where they're just blanking.
Maybe you overwhelmed them with data.
I don't know. Maybe.
So we'll try to get an answer of why they were denied.
Yes. Yep.
When were they denied?
It was Thursday or Friday I was notified.
Okay.
Let's move on to some good news.
Arrests from 2024, about eighty-four hundred. The vast majority of these arrests were outstanding warrants, theft, burglary, trespassing, assault-causing bodily injury. Vehicle pursuits, there's a hundred and fifty-seven in 2024. These are comparison years, and these are the known reasons of why the pursuit started. Moving violation is the top one from last year at seventy-four. Most of these are what the officer initiated the traffic stop for. So equipment violation, that could be expired tags, lights out, whatever. Those are significantly down from 2023.
Did you give them instructions not to do that? Because that's a big change.
That was...
Policy change?
It wasn't a policy change, but there has been more emphasis on the high liability of pursuits.
Gotcha.
And understanding why we're initiating them. Our Mobile Crisis Response Team and Care Program. Mission statement of these programs is to respond and serve all people in our community that are experiencing a crisis, advocating with compassion, empathy, and understanding. So with them both combined, they had eighty-eight hundred and ninety-one calls. That's fifty percent increase from 2023. There's a lot of different calls in there, but of those calls, just under one percent resulted in arrest. So very few incidents result in arrest from these.
How many respond with an officer, with a uniformed officer of those calls? All of them or part of them?
Well, of those, so that's a combination of those. If you look at the next one to the right, the field responses with the care team, it's about fourteen hundred calls had an officer respond. Or I'm sorry, without an officer responding, they had about fourteen hundred calls without an officer.
That's the eighty-eight ninety-one, and fourteen hundred of those did not have an officer?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just ask, only because we've seen the numbers, if we were fully stat, how much more could we use? We divert some officer training over to this, or more care workers, more...
Well, there's always, I mean, it does feel, and also our dispatch has a crisis dispatcher that handles these calls, so it makes it a little bit easier to recognize the calls and then divert the services in there. And they're also able to, that dispatcher's able to get them services without even dispatching people there. When I talk to them, they're busy, so any more help, obviously...
Even the initial dispatch?
Yes. There's always calls coming in that are related to some level of mobile crisis. All the times a day. It's not just in the daytime. Obviously, it's middle of the night, too. And these are harder positions to fill.
And the call centers really during the day, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Going back to your earlier slides, are these likely 911 calls or all emergency and non-emergency calls?
These are all calls. These tend to come in on the 911 crisis line. And if you would call 911, they'll ask you, "You need fire, police, or mental health services?" And then they'll triage it from there. But these are more than likely to be the 911 call.
Well, like, that's a huge percentage of the hundred and forty-nine thousand total 911 calls. And that's, it's really good.
Yeah. And you only have, the way I understood, you say, one designated person in a twenty-four-hour span that sits and is able to handle those calls?
It should go twenty-four hours a day, but one should be there all the time.
And so that call...
It doesn't always happen, but it should be there.
Well, I mean, that's...
Yeah.
In a perfect world, that would, you would have someone there to answer that?
Yes.
That's a lot. That's a lot of call. We're just, are we trying to train more of your people that answer the other calls now to try to maybe have two, or...
They get cross-trained.
Yeah.
It is, it's a difficult position, and it takes time to get used to the regular 911 calls and triaging those, and then this is even more of a special to understand the services that you can provide.
Yeah, I understand.
We can look at those, the data, the heat map for the mental health calls and the public broadlons. It's one, one and up.
Well, are they from, I mean, are they from, there are employees, right?
Uh, no.
Oh, they're not?
The individual that's the clinician is broadlons, similar to how the care team is also has broadlons employees in it. So it's part of that contract with them.
Okay.
But, but all dispatchers have been through training regarding mental health response, so...
Yeah. All right. Investigations Division, they handle our personnel and training. So the academy, Crimes Against Persons, Crimes Against Property, Family Conflict, Vicin Narcotics, and then Crime Scene Investigations. 2024, we had two classes graduate, thirty-seven officers graduated, and then sixteen recruits were hired, but they rolled into 2025 numbers. So they didn't graduate at the end of 2024. We hired twenty-three non-sworn employees. We had three hundred and forty-six officer applications, and we logged just under, or just over forty-three thousand training hours.
Is that both classes? You had a total of three hundred and forty-six applications? Or is that just one class you had that?
That's both. That's both classes.
Yeah, that's, that's good. Isn't that, isn't that, I mean, is that increased since...
That has increased in the last two years.
Yeah, that's what I would ask.
Yeah. So we're seeing a trend in Des Moines where applications should be trending up.
Responsible for that trend?
I, we have a specific dedicated officer who is out there to do recruiting and some methodology of recruiting. Obviously, people care about money, but a lot of people who go into this job want to know about, what's your mission, what's your service, you know, what's the goals? And, you know, hitting on those things, advertising, being visible on the internet, being visible on social media, making people aware when your process is. We believe these things have helped us get more eyes on our application.
Are we seeing different applicants as a result, too? Like, is the applicant pool changing? Or is it just roughly the same type of pool, just the higher volume of applicants?
I would not say the applicant pool has changed enough to say we're seeing a trend in changing. All right. So these are the Part I crimes that get reported every year, and our clearance rate on all of the Part I crimes, we'll see this on in the next slide, are better than the national average. Burglaries are, were down fifteen percent from twenty-three. Our clearance rate's twenty-one percent, but that's eight percent above the national average. Our murders were up slightly at fifteen. These are very low numbers, so if you have one extra one, that goes up seven percent. Our clearance rate's ninety-three percent. That's forty-three percent above the national average. Robberies, they were down just under twenty percent. Our clearance rate's forty-five percent. National average was twenty-one percent below that. Aggravated assaults, down three percent. Our clearance rate's eighty percent. That's thirty-five percent above the national average. Arson, that was down forty-four percent. Our clearance rate is forty-four point two percent. That's eighteen percent above the national average. Rate, our cases were up one percent. Our clearance rate's eighty-five percent. That's sixty-five percent above the national average. Motor vehicle theft, it's down seventeen percent. Our clearance rate's forty percent. That's thirty-one percent above the national average. Theft and larcenies, they're down about five, just under six percent, actually. Our clearance rate's thirty-two percent. That's nineteen percent above the national average.
Clearance rate statistics, so what explains that? And I assume our suburbs have probably similar clearance rates? Or are the suburbs lower clearance? And is it, is it some of the really big cities that have a higher level have significantly less of, less of these crimes that get solved? Like, how do we, how should we put that when you, the national piece in context?
So for the most part, a bigger city, like big cities, their numbers are gonna be down. It is, it gets more difficult to solve cases when there's more people and there's less cooperation. And the smaller the city is, usually you have more cooperation. You have a better chance of somebody recognizing a photo than you do in a bigger city. There's other factors, but one thing you'll see for murder, if it's gang-related, those are very difficult cases to solve. And lack of cooperation. And you'll see, you know, fifteen homicides, or fifteen murders in Des Moines, or a big city will have several hundred, hundred and fifty or so, two hundred. That gets difficult with those numbers to solve.
Yeah. But just related, from what you're saying, the murders tend to be relational and less gang, I mean, maybe more on the domestic violence then, because we know exactly who did it, or are gang-related murders, I mean, ninety-three percent clearance rate, that means there's like one case that, of those fifteen, that wasn't...
We have, we have, so the numbers are so low, fifteen. And even if they, you know, I've seen them go up to the mid twenties and down to five. That number is so low. There are going to be years where you have more gang-related, and they're gonna be harder to solve. That number is so low. There are going to be years where you have more gang-related, and they're going to be harder to solve. And there's not a whole lot of balance there. But things that have helped is technology has really helped us solve even the gang-related homicides where, um, video cameras around town have really helped um, solve these. So I can't speak exactly what other cities are doing. They have helped out.
Chief, I know you've got a later slide on some of that technology on the detective work, but generally, how do you feel about your staffing that are dedicated? Additional staffing going to change these numbers at all? Or is this a good?
Additional staffing would help. It won't necessarily make these numbers better. These are really good numbers. What the problem is going to be if we don't get additional staffing in the upcoming years is you will see burnout. You will see, and we're already seeing it, where uh, the officers that used to stay twenty-five, thirty years, they're getting to five to seven years. And it's, uh, a lot of pressure, a lot of, it's a very difficult job. So, um, they can go do another career and, and have weekends off, have holidays off. And so if we, right now, when staffing's low in the summertime because of vacation, and you try to take your time off, and you get denied because we don't have the staffing levels, that leads to burnout. And that leads to loss of talent.
And disgruntled employees.
Disgruntled employees. So, um, you know, I, this wasn't designed for this discussion.
No, no. But it's, it's good that we, we know that. I mean, that needs to be said publicly.
All right, moving on.
Oh, I mean, does.
Uh, firearms cases. So I have this broken down into three parts, confirmed shots fired cases. So what this means, if we get a call that there were shots fired, we have to know, was it fireworks? What was it? So if we confirm it, there's damage to somebody's property or vehicle, there's a video that we saw, or there's evidence there like shell casings that we can say, okay, there's definitely some sort of shooting occurred here. That's up slightly from, uh, the last few years. You can see a little trend going up there. Uh, cases involving firearms, four hundred and sixty. Now, this does not necessarily mean that the firearms were shot during the case, but the officers dealt with the firearm during the incident, and it was taken. Uh, guns seized, just under six hundred were seized last year. That's down uh, significantly, pretty significantly from, uh, twenty twenty-two. But still, pretty high number. Narcotics. Uh, last, in twenty-four, we had a hundred and eighty drug overdose cases, twenty-seven narcotics-related deaths. Officers administered Narcan thirty-five times, and thirty, uh, lives were saved from the use of Narcan. Just from our officers. That's really good. Uh, we were able to get that Narcan, I think, two years ago. And, uh, obviously, thirty people saved their lives this year. So that's, that's a big statistic there. Um, if you look at the drugs seized, fentanyl continues to be, uh, the main uh, money amount drug that, that we see in seize. Overall poundage, obviously marijuana is the most, but the value of that is relatively low, considering the, the pound that.
Is that typically with other drugs you're finding marijuana? Like, when you raid, they have fentanyl or meth? There, I mean?
Usually when they do, uh, a, a big narcotics raid, they're, they're looking for the fentanyl or the methamphetamine.
Right.
Marijuana is there, but that wasn't the
Right.
original source of the complaint.
I mean, when we have billboards up advertising that you can buy it, you know, forty-five minutes to the south, that just amazes me that we're, I just, yeah, whatever. I mean, it is.
Just want to ask a question before we go on. Guns seized, when we talk about five hundred and ninety-eight, and that's less than what we've done in years previous, why, why has that number gone down? I know in years past, we had, like, we had officers that were out there during the summer, and they were like confiscating gums, guns every night. What's happened here?
Well, there's a couple of things that I will throw out there. I can't tell you exactly what happened, but one, uh, state law with the, uh, open carry where you don't need a license, you can be eighteen to have a handgun. Uh, that has changed. Uh, and then as we go through this, uh, yes, we used to have a proactive, um, special response team. We used that type of manpower to form the Loop Squad to do that downtown uh, over the summer months instead of doing the, um, special response team.
I mean, you know, I mean, our murders are up, but guns seized are less than that. I, I just wondered why, what was happening? Because it looks like we've, we've still got some violence with younger people that, that are out there shooting each other.
There's, there's definitely, uh, a trend where it does feel like there are many use with guns, and we do hear about, and we do have the reports. Uh, seizing the guns is down. I can't tell you exactly why, but, uh, I could say a specialized unit that would be proactive for that would definitely raise that number. It might create some other issues, but it definitely would raise that number.
Thanks for going back. I just didn't get a chance to ask.
Chief, in our conversation and prepping the seizure slide there, talk just a minute about how seizing the, uh, drugs, actually.
All right.
How, uh, seizing cash is becoming more and more rare?
So, uh, cryptocurrency is a big thing, kind of nationally now, but in the narcotics world, that is the preferred method of, uh, keeping your cash, especially large sums of money. Um, which makes the seizure of illegal uh, revenue from narcotics difficult for us. Um, before, before we would seize a bank account or find the cash at a residence that we, uh, did a warrant on, now that doesn't exist very often. Now it's on, uh, cryptocurrency and traded between numbers. And it, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to seize any of the cryptocurrency.
Guns, uh, 3D printer? Anything telling there as well? Are you seeing more of the no serial number?
I'm curious on the crypto piece. I'd just like to- So the transactions are just harder to trace because you have a crypto account that is just a series of numbers, and so you can't trace it back. But even if you caught-
So there, there's a, there's a methodology to it. And we're not talking the hand-to-hand twenty dollars. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars that they transfer it to an account, and then it's almost immediately transferred to another account. And if you do not have that PIN number, you're not getting in. So if they would lose their PIN number, they're not getting their money either. But we don't have a method to do it, and that's nationally. Very difficult.
Yeah. So they've figured out how to how to hide it.
I'm not saying that this, you can't do it, but it's very, very difficult to figure it out.
And so the folks, even if we catch them and they're in jail, they're just sitting on their money until they potentially until they come back or get out.
Right. Yes. Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Chief. That other question was the manufactured weapons.
Oh, uh, we do see some ghost guns is what the 3D printed gun is. But what we were seeing more of is, uh, the switches that were, uh, they're like a little thing that adds to the back of a handgun that turns it into an automatic. The trigger, yes. It was, it was, we saw more of that than we did ghost guns. We did see ghost guns. We did get a few of those, but, uh, the trigger, the switch stuff is, is more of the trend. That's, uh, more specifically, the Glock handgun.
Yeah.
They have a way to, it's not a very big piece of, uh, equipment. It's really cheap. And they put it on the, on the handgun, and it turns it into an automatic.
So it's going to fire the sixteen shots faster? Or just, you just hold the trigger?
Yeah. You just hold the trigger, and it'll be less than, probably less than three seconds.
Oh, yeah. That's-
Are those trigger arms illegal at, at the state level? I mean, I know we talked about it, but we're preempted.
I don't know if we've ever charged that statewide. I feel like we've charged it federally.
Okay.
And then there's-
It's federally prohibited.
Yes. And it's a federal firearms violation. With that being said, I feel like there's also a lot of stuff that is in current litigation about-
Whether or not-
Yeah.
Whether or not from a Second Amendment-
Yes.
prohibit. But those have made things markedly-
Yes.
markedly more dangerous.
More-
That, that's specific.
Yes.
And, and we're seeing it on a regular, regular basis here.
Uh, I wouldn't say like every day, but yes, we do come across those. All right. Uh, crime scene investigations. So fingerprints, they analyzed about seventeen hundred fingerprints. Uh, they did twenty-four thousand manual print comparisons, and identified just under four hundred, uh, individuals from those. The lab submissions, we had just under three hundred in-house lab requests. Uh, we sent two hundred and four requests to the DCI. Uh, most of those are going to be our DNA requests. Of the things that we do for our crime scene investigation, um, the one product that we do not have is a DNA analyzer. So we send all our DNA submissions to the state. However, we are one of the few people in the Midwest outside of the state agencies. So DCI has a NIBIN, and we also have one. And that is, allows us to analyze the shell casings uh, that were found at scenes. Um, prior to us getting this device, the turnaround on a shell casing inquiry was pretty close to a year. And now the turnaround is within a week, usually a few days. So that has been very helpful to our, um, investigations, because instead of having a year-old lead come in, you have something within a few days.
On the rates of solving and, and clearing, uh, cases compared to national, would this be one of those elements that would contribute to our ability to uh, close cases and, and find the culprits?
This helps of two different ways, or several different ways, but it helps on an individual case where you're able to match up or see if this handgun belongs to the crime scene. So that's great. But it also helps our intelligence to know who's doing what. If I have shell casings that match three different shootings, okay, what do these three areas have in common? What's going on? What individuals are we looking at? And it really helps our intelligence level in understanding where the next targets might be, too. So it is very helpful. And the work that is able to be done in just a few days compared to a year uh, before, when you'd get it back a year later, I mean, the gun could have changed hands multiple times. It's really hard to identify it back to an individual. Now, if it's a couple of days, it's a lot easier.
Yeah. Impressive.
So that you would send them into the state before-
We had to send them into the state.
How far the state's behind?
Yes. Uh, and we're, the state has gotten much better with the, um, DNA analysis. Um, we were running into a problem where it was significantly delayed getting results back in DNA. Um, I don't know how they changed their process, but it's been significantly faster in the last year.
Chief, how much of this work, uh, especially kind of the lab and so forth, is done by one of our sworn officers versus a civilian that brings?
Almost all of this, if not all of this, is done by civilians. Um, I'm just looking at, I can't think of a time where, um, a officer would be submitting or gathering any of these, uh, things. They, obviously, the, uh, crime scene, they will identify the, the object, but our, uh, crime scene uh, technicians will take the pictures, gather the evidence, and then submit the request.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Uh, ballistics part. So they fired twenty-eight hundred casings. So that's when we have recovered handguns, they have to fire those handguns to then enter a casing to make sure a casing in the past didn't match the handgun that we currently have. Um, we got three hundred and twenty leads from, uh, entering these casings into the database. And the database is, uh, local, and then it turns into national, too. It's a the NIBIN program's a federal program. Um, we assisted, like I said earlier, we're the only agency outside of the state that has this, um, machine. And we assisted thirteen local agencies. And that was part of the reason why, uh, we were uh, given the machine was to help local agencies. So we are, uh, assisting when they call. We help process and enter their results into that program. Uh, property and special assignment. So we, uh, talked about cryptocurrency a little bit earlier. This is a different end of that. Uh, eighteen cases reported of cryptocurrency scams, just under five hundred thousand dollars, and money was lost, averaging about just under twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, per scam. Obviously, uh, not all crime is reported. And there is a belief that, uh, there's a significantly more than eighteen uh, people were scammed in our city last year who were using cryptocurrency. But again, this is very difficult to trace back and recover. So once it's entered into a system, really difficult. It was difficult before, but this is even, uh, harder.
Well, I'm sorry, I, I, I just don't really understand what this scam is. Just, I had to take up too much time, but just a quick example of something.
So I call up Ms. Westegard, and I say, I know from social media that your granddaughter's name is Emily. And I say, hey, Emily is in jail. Uh, she needs, she needs five thousand dollars to get her out. She can't talk to you right now. Um, and you, this is a fishing expedition, and- and along the ways they'll find somebody who's like, oh my gosh, I gotta help my granddaughter. And then they'll say, I need five thousand dollars, go to this crypto machine. It's located wherever they enter the money, they put it into the machine and then it's, then it's numbers and then you're not getting it back. And they usually continue till finally either your bank or somebody you know stops you from giving them more and more money. And so it's usually not a large chunk to begin with. It's an ongoing thing that, that keeps going. It's a scam of opportunity where they just keep calling and calling. What I would guess we're going to see more of is AI and they're going to make this scam a lot more believable when they get people's voices. So when computers are able to generate your granddaughter's voice or whatever, your face, it's going to be a lot more believable. So you'll see more of this.
You know, Josh, I mean, it's mostly the elderly they're targeting to do something like this, right?
Yeah, I mean, they're trying to take advantage of people trying to do the right thing.
Right.
Trying to help people.
Yeah.
All right, retail theft. Uh, seventeen hundred retail thefts, uh, were reported to us, eight hundred or so were closed. Five hundred of those were closed by arrest. Many re, many retail theft incidents don't get reported or the business itself does not want to pursue the incident. Sometimes if the person comes back and, and pays, they just, that's the end of it for them too. So these are probably well under reported also.
Just for my, I mean, the, the crypto scams and the monetary value is phenomenal. We have a sense of the dollar amounts involved in the retail theft. I mean, are these?
If I threw out a number, it would be, it would be national and it's, I mean, the number staggering the, the amount and some businesses, they don't report it at all. We know a couple and I'm not going to say who they are, but there are a couple that that's their business process. They just don't report it.
Usually we, when I was in retail, you allow a certain percentage of known theft and it depended on the department. Higher in departments had the higher amount. So I, I'm sure it's built into, unfortunately to the business plan.
Right, because certain number of people just kind of walk in and pretend like they purchased something and walk out with it.
Well, yeah.
Going back to the others, I mean, we as a police department, we're, we're not calling people saying, hey, you, we, we need, you need to do this for your granddaughter. I mean, I mean, that needs to be made.
Police department, we put out stuff quite a bit.
That needs to be made clear.
Sergeant Presek puts out the stuff. I know Sheriff Snyder puts out stuff. That, that is a big scam too where it's, I'm Sheriff Snyder with the Polk County or I'm, you know, whoever with the police department. It's one of the scams where people feel oh, you know, they want to help and.
I've heard the neighborhood officers bring it up at the neighborhood meetings as well, which is good to keep that.
Yeah, it's important that we.
We try to do the PSAs on that, uh, quite often. And when we do the neighborhood meetings, we do bring it up or, or even if we do the coffee with the police.
Yeah.
A lot of those area, you know, those situations are older individuals, we bring it up at those.
Maybe at, maybe, maybe Thursdays on Pi Day at Senior Center, we should, we should have all non-serious and just go and, and explain that this could possibly happen because they're not, some of those folks aren't looking at social media. They're not, you know, that I, I just, I think that we, I think that we should do something like that.
All right, moving on. So we have our 2024 annual report done. Uh, I will say that this is the most comprehensive report I've seen us put out and that's because we were able to, a city allowed us to have analysts and they were able to go back and get the data that we were actually looking for and clean up the data. Uh, that was always one of the issues was you would enter a number and Joshua or Councilman Manabon, I'm sorry, would, would call about a number and I'd look it up and the number is fifteen hundred. And then Councilman Gatto would call somebody else in the department and the number would be fourteen hundred. Well, where, why were we getting this, these numbers off? And so these analysts were able to, uh, the police technology folks that we got on our department now are top notch. And they spent months and months and months cleaning up the data to get this product out. So it's thorough and much more detailed than this was, but we're pretty happy with this report.
Have you, uh, selected a, a lead victim resource officer since, uh, Terri Mitchell's retirement?
So they are in the process of selecting that person. Now, we had some ideas of where we going to make it multiple people and they would be on call us and then we discovered that we just wanted at least one person that was similar to Officer Mitchell where they knew the system and everybody knew they could go to that person. And you have to be the right, my, you know, I can't just, I don't want to put an individual in that position unless they really want that position. So we're in the process of narrowing down who wants that position and then we'll have that select.
You might give a, just a, a brief description of what that person does.
So the victim services officer is the person that will respond to, um, all sorts of things, but usually it's death and if it's a suicide or homicide, they will help the family with logistics as far as, okay, you have to call funeral home. This is what's going to happen. And then they're the point of contact for the family. What's going on? Let's say it's a homicide. What's going on in the case? Instead of the family trying to reach the lead investigator, which is going to be real difficult because they're not in the office very much. They're trying to investigate the case. You will have a point of contact and then that, uh, victim services officer can go to the investigation and say, what can I tell the family? What information? Where are we at? And then go back and report to the family. So it's important, but it's also a difficult job mentally. And it's a sworn officer, um, but it's.
Delivering bad news too.
It's, it's a difficult job and you need a specific mentality and personality to do that job. And it's, it's not a position that I feel comfortable putting somebody at unless they really want to do it and they have the skills to do it.
Any other questions?
Meetings and please pass that along. I know sometimes it's one more thing to do, but it's very meaningful and, and informative for the neighborhood.
Yeah, we're, uh, we are making an effort for that and I will let you know that um, probably hopefully mid-October, we'll have our five-year strategic plan in place and we'll let you all see that before we put it out, but, uh, it's coming together very nicely. It's a lot of work, but, uh, it'll be a good thing.
Patrol a little bit and kind of trying to keep everybody, you know, instead of, hey, I'm going to work in this area for two days out of the month and there's really no accountability to some of the things that are happening and so that, that is changing, right?
So, uh, we will have a different schedule and a makeup of our patrol starting the first, right around the first of the year when the new schedule starts.
Okay.
I think it might be January eighth, but it'll be right around the first of the year.
So the same patrol officers will be in the, kind of the same area or at least the same?
The idea of it is we are putting more sergeants on patrol, two more sergeants per shift on patrol. And with that, we'll have each sergeant have a dedicated squad, which the sergeant and the officers will all have the same days off. Right now, that is not the case. And so being able to supervise can be difficult when you don't have the same days off as the people in your squad. Next year.
That's a good idea.
We will, I think it's a good idea. We're going to see how it goes, but, uh.
So it sounds like the right thing to do. It sounds like there's be more accountability to, to.
And I, I think there, there'll be much, there'll be more, uh, opportunity as a sergeant to be a leader and a coach and, and instruct than there is right now.
And beyond Mike's comments about, um, your officers attending neighborhood meetings. It's been noted you've attended many neighborhood meetings this last year and it's been appreciated, so.
Well, so it's always enjoyable to go out and meet some people and, and hear, hear what's going on in each different neighborhood. And Des Moines is a fascinating city where each neighborhood has different things and they, they want to talk about different things. So, uh, you know, it's been, it's been. Yeah, we appreciate that.
With all the compliments, I'm, I'm, I know that people in Des Moines are lucky that you, uh, wanted to be chief and I'm, I'm really happy with the manager's selection. Uh, thank you. I, I do want to talk about just for a second, the strategic plan and how detailed, uh, it might be with the manager's recommendation on staffing over the next five to 10 years, how you'll deploy people different, um, what the council should expect in terms of reasonable request for additional staffing. And, and, you know, included in that, the manager and the council have, have, um, tried to make Des Moines a good place to be an employee and to spend their career. Uh, that's added some benefits that have taken people off the street, you know, for a long, you know, longer periods of time. And just how that affects our staffing level and in order to accommodate for some of those, what we should expect for, for budget increased request. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a, a, a pipe dream to think that we're not going to have to spend more of our resources and more resources in the police department than we have uh, historically, and I hope that the strategic plan like addresses that like really clearly. So we have a blueprint going forward for what the council can expect, at least that the requests of the manager and the chief are going to be.
Uh, it does, I haven't written the final, but it, during the five years, there's incremental increases. The goal is, obviously the budget is an issue and it's not just the police departments citywide. I understand that. And even if I could say we needed forty more officers, it would take a while to hire that. So, uh, I think it'll have, it'll get us marching in the right direction and it'll help our officers. And even if it's slow progress, it's still progress in that direction, uh, understanding what the budget is too. And I don't want to throw out ideas in the strategic plan that I don't think are going to be successful or have means to be successful, but, uh, I do feel like this is a time where with this plan, we are able to outline stuff and let people know what our goals are over these five years. Each year has a, has a plan and hopefully we can make those, uh, goals. And I think we will. I, I think it's going to be a reasonable plan, but, uh, the main thing is we have got to get walking at least in the right direction.
Fantastic.
Okay, with that, thank you very much. Thank you for your service and thank you for the work you've been doing over this past year.
I have the annual report here.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief.
So, the next item?
Yep. Uh, so council was asking about, uh, the options on how to construct the Skywalk sorry, in the vicinity of Fifth and Walnut. And so we've, we've asked Steve and his group to, to put that together. And so with that, at the end of the conversation, we can talk about timing. Did you need one more? Thank you, you have mine.
All right, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, my name is Steve Neber, Des Moines City Engineer, Des Moines resident. Uh, as Scott mentioned, here to talk about the Fifth and Walnut Parking Garage, uh, Skywalk Improvement Feasibility Study. Uh, I've got some team members with me, uh, Jake Knutson and Calvin Miller, uh, from our city team. Uh, we've also got, uh, Todd Garner, Matt Roenkamp from, uh, uh, from Substance Architecture. They are a, a local firm right here downtown, uh, have lots of experience, uh, working on buildings downtown and our Skywalk system downtown. So they, uh, that's the, the main project team who've done a lot of the work to look at this. Uh, and so, uh, we're going to talk about the goals, why we did this study, uh, what we looked at in terms of our considerations, uh, and then look at how we can meet a schedule uh, that would align with, uh, the major development that's occurring right in this area, so. So why are we doing this? As Scott mentioned, you know, you know, we needed to have a plan for how we could address that, you know, this, the Skywalk, uh, network in this area was removed in 2017, uh, with the demolition of the old Fifth and Walnut Parking Garage. Uh, the new garage was built, finished in 2021. And, and so we need to have a plan for how we could address this, uh, and reconnect, uh, you know, the system. One being, uh, our own code talks about this, uh, when we removed the parking garage, we took out the accessible vertical access, basically connecting, giving people a connection from the street up to the Skywalk system. And so, uh, so we need to essentially have one vertical access, uh, you know, an accessible vertical access per street block. Uh, and, and so that's listed in our code there. And two, we want to look this as well for economics, uh, and, and we put on the slide here, uh, the comparison of number of licensed parking spaces, those that are monthly parkers, reserved parking spaces, comparing to other parking garages and you can see the Fifth and Walnut is at thirty two percent where others in the area are, are, you know, nearing eighty percent and so.
Do you understand what that number is? I, I don't, like, what's the?
That, that is solely like, uh, reserved spaces, so like monthly parkers.
Out of the total number of spaces?
Out of the total number of spaces, yeah.
Right. I mean, isn't the Fifth and Walnut, I mean, it, that's like twice the size of those other, those other parking garages, right?
It, it is much, yeah, it is much bigger.
So in terms of absolute number, the number of?
I'd have to check though.
I mean, the seventy seven and seventy nine percent don't make a lot of, I mean, I, I just don't get what those numbers are telling us.
I could pull up and I'd try and, uh, get the numbers on the, uh, number of spaces per garage to see comparable. I mean, Fourth and Grant is a, is a, a pretty large garage in comparison.
Right, and it's definitely not seventy nine percent full.
Well, if you walked in on a given day, uh, it, these are who reserve spaces, monthly parkers. So if they're not there, yeah, then there's, there's a space open.
So I think, maybe I'm, maybe I'm confused, but I think Josh, is, is the Fourth and Grant and the Fifth and Walnut have the same amount of parking spaces total or is the Fifth and Walnut twice as big as the Fourth and Grant?
Yeah, I mean, how many reserved spots are we talking about?
Total, total, like total number of spots.
Jake, you had sent me that number. Do you have the numbers by chance on the?
Does the Fifth and Walnut space include the projected new building across the street? Or is that just what they have as of today reserved?
You have it.
As of today, it's what are reserved? So it's going to be a lot higher number.
I, I would hope it's no surprise anyway. It's the most underutilized. Except Seventh and Center is also pretty low.
Isn't there another side of the coin that the economics would be that we have, we have the most unused capacity? Like there's an opportunity? I mean, I'm not like.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, yeah.
That's exactly what it, yeah.
That's what I'm trying to say, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's a, obviously a large residential tower with hundreds of units going up that, so there's a lot of opportunity here for, to use, you know.
Although with the tower, the development agreement gives them the parking stalls, they're coming regardless of whether or not there's a Skywalk.
How many do they get?
Um, I don't, do we have?
And is it? And is it reserved versus actually paid?
I can, Mayor, Members of Council, Matt Anderson, Deputy City Manager, Josh, we can look into that. It's a 390 plus or minus unit project. And I can look at the details on that. Just because they have the parking doesn't mean everyone will be parking there or that everyone will have a car. So I don't know the exact numbers, but we can.
But it's 390?
It's 390 unit project, yes. So you can.
How many total spaces are, isn't there like 600 in there or something? Or is there?
A little more, I believe, yeah.
Not much. Is it, yeah, it's not much more.
I think, I think the.
So, I mean, that's.
What Steve will get to, I think, in his presentation is that the lack of Skywalk connectivity is precluding probably some office users from, from considering this ramp, particularly the Capital Square right across the street, who, most of those parkers would do it, if they're in the public system, would park at the Fourth and Grand Garage right now. This would be an option because it's right across the street.
Those are 32% mostly from the Justice Center?
Excuse me?
Is it 32% mostly, mostly from the Justice Center?
I would, I would guess so. I mean, we could, we could look into who, who exactly those monthly holders are. We will be moving more of the Justice Center and the, and the courthouse parkers there as the county looks to develop that lot to the south.
Yeah, that surface lot.
Yeah.
How many is that surface lot? How many spaces is that? Do we know?
Uh, I don't, I don't know the number. It's in the, it's, it's less than 100. I mean, 100 parkers.
Yeah, but if you do.
Without a Skywalk connection.
Matt?
Yes.
Can you remind us of what our obligations are to maintain Skywalk connectivity?
Well, Mr. Fisher might be able to, to, to tell you. This is, so there is a Skywalk ordinance. This is part of the Skywalk system, which is the, the map that the city council designates what the system is. You can, you can add and remove pieces to that system. But I believe it's, there's a three-year requirement once you're disconnected from the system. Oh, okay. Yeah. So we do have an obligation per your own ordinance to, to seek connectivity there. And as Steve said, every block that's part of the system is required to have a handicap accessible access, vertical access between the street level and the, and the Skywalk level. So we, we don't have that designated access today. That was previously provided by the garage.
So we're obligated to connect this parking garage to our Skywalk?
Eventually, if you, if you elected not to, you, you would need to change, you would need to change the Skywalk map and remove this parcel and this, this block from the Skywalk system proper. But you have precedent for doing that. You've, you've added.
I mean, you're telling me that there's gonna be 320 possible potential across the street.
Correct.
So I mean that, okay, all right. Yeah, that's fine.
Just, we were hoping the numbers, there's 1,060 parking spaces in Fourth and Grand. The license number is 835 in Fourth and Grand, Fifth and Walnut, 625 spaces with only 200 as licensed, so.
Wait, there's, there's 800, so 80% of the Fourth and Grand as licensed?
That's what we were provided by our parking administration, yeah.
I mean.
You said there's 1,000 spaces there.
Right.
Right.
And 80% are licensed. I mean, do we know how many of those, because those are, I mean, one, we're proposing to peel them off because those are folks that, as Matt just said, those are the people who would, are at Cap Square now. But I guarantee you that is not 80% full on a regular basis. I mean, so do we have a sense of what those contracts look like and if they're gonna be expiring?
Yeah.
That is not.
Yeah. I mean, the point of this slide is the garage is underutilized and there's opportunity. That's, that's the point of this slide. And we, we could, we could provide more on the utilization.
And there are options on how to fix that.
Yeah.
That's what we're here for this morning.
Steve, I have a, I have a quick, I have a quick answer from staff on, on your question. In the, in the development agreement with the tower across the street, they are required to have 100 paid spaces by the year two and up to 390. So we're guaranteed at least 100 parkers from that project. We're hoping to get much, much more.
So when the, the development was, was being designed, the, the, this slide shows, particularly on the right, that the parking garage was designed in coordination with a development, a tower that would provide access through the, the tower to the north. And so I put the red arrows there to show, you know, this was how this garage was designed in coordination with the built, the, the planned building at the site to connect back to Skywalk Bridges 4C and 5C over to the Polk County Justice Center and/or connect to 4C, 4D to Capital Square and Kirkwood. So, so this was the plan for when that development was occurring. And here's some photos that kind of show what it looks like today. You can see in the upper right photo, if you look northwest, you can see Skywalk 4C, 5C to Polk County Justice Center. And the lower right, there's what it looks like looking northeast toward the Skywalk that goes between the Kirkwood and Cap Square. And there's a temporary connection so people can go from Cap Square to the Kirkwood today.
And connect it to the garage that is just a dead end there.
Well, that's what we, that's what our team looked at. So here's the three options. Option one, actually demolishes the bridge 4C, 5C and connects directly from the Polk County Justice Center down to the garage and then kind of an angular, the lower left and an angle. Where option two utilizes the bridge, that 4C, 5C bridge that's there. It renovates it and then connects it essentially running down the sidewalk, but still stays in, in public right away. So it doesn't, to minimize impacts to that, that site that's potential for development and then connects to the garage. And then the third option looked at, on the lower right, that one would actually connect to the system using that, connecting to 4C, 4D, connecting to Cap Square and the Kirkwood. So they, they looked at, you know, these are the three main options they looked at just, you know, for consideration to see the pros and cons. And, and so.
Can you go back one slide?
Mm-hmm.
Just, I, I can't see it very well on this thing. The picture. Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, and I'll zoom in to each one of these once we.
Okay, go ahead.
So looking at option one, this, here are some graphics that our, our design team had prepared here. And like I said, this one actually involves, it's all new construction, so it actually would take down the bridge that's temporarily supported for 4C, 5C and then construct, basically in an angle, a, a new bridge that runs between Polk County Justice Center and, and the garage. It is the lowest square footage, so it's, it's being a direct connection. So it does come out to be the lowest cost. There are challenges with it. One, you could see that it would present challenges with, in coordination with a new development, if a new development happened on that site. And we also have challenges with where the supports are with the sidewalks. We can get them to meet code, but it makes the sidewalks very tight by putting those, you can see the columns that come down in the, you know, essentially in the sidewalks there. So, so there are definitely some challenges with this one from a constructability standpoint. When we look at option two, this one would utilize the existing 4C, 5C bridge and it would renovate that bridge and then essentially run down the sidewalk, you know, trying to stay out of that private, staying out of that private property to, or that property to allow it for future development. And this also, you could see, can present a lot of options for connection, you know, when development occurs on that property. So. It's, it is more, it's, it's really more just from a square footage standpoint because it's the length and the, and having to renovate the existing Skywalk. So it's really kind of comes down to square footage is what it is. Yep. HVAC and electrical lighting. Yeah. Yeah.
So people walking on the Skywalk would walk underneath it?
On the sidewalk, yep, yep.
I mean, I know we have, like, perpendicular to streets that we walk under, but trying to picture one where we're walking or whatever, whatever that is, 30 yards underneath this guy. Yeah. I mean, I can't think of another case we've done that. What?
At the Marriott? The Mar, the Marriott?
Okay. That's true.
Oh, Walnut Street School?
As it runs on the east side of the Marriott.
Okay. Well, in, in this one, they're able to get the columns in a better position too, so we're not impeding the sidewalk as much as option one was.
Walking, like, the sidewalk is covered for that half block?
Yeah. 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 And then the third option, as I mentioned, this one connects essentially to Cap Square and Kirkwood here. Now this one, there, there are a number of negatives. Obviously with the square footage, it's the most expensive by far. It does impact significantly the lot to the north of the garage, so that would take up some of that space. It has negative impacts potentially to the alley flow as well with supports there. And so this one is, definitely has some.
Right?
This one is, is not, not recommended, but it, you know, we wanted to look at least consideration for how would we connect it or how could we connect this way.
Wow.
And then also it's, you know, it would be the longest route to the new residential tower too.
I wouldn't even consider that.
Yeah.
Would we have to use eminent domain to get the?
Well, that, that might be, we would, we would, that would be a problem having the, the amount of going through that north.
So this really isn't even, I mean, option three is, that, that's not really an option. I mean, that's.
It's, it's definitely not, yeah, it's not recommended. Yeah.
We're not doing that.
So here's just kind of a snapshot back, looking at the sum, a summary with the costs and kind of the higher level advantages. But, but we are, the recommended one would be option two with the advantages of connection, specifically connection to the future development, the constructability with where the supports can land within the, around the, avoiding the, you know, impacts to the sidewalks. And, and so that's the, you know, that would be the one that would be recommended to, to move forward with is, is option two.
Steve, where, where would the dollars for this come from? What fund would we be using?
Yeah, well, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it's in the, it's in the, Calvin, is it TIF or would it be, we could use, or would we?
We can use.
We could.
That would likely be the, the source, but it'd have to be debt issuance.
Yeah.
But it's not in our CIP right now.
Yeah, we, we, we would have money to start it to coordinate with the development.
But, so $2.6 million is it? I, I don't remember seeing that in our CIP.
It wasn't line items?
It was Skywalks generally.
It's in the, yeah.
Do you have the 2.6 in there already for that?
I'd have to check. So.
I don't remember.
Capacity was in the TIF.
I guess I don't remember seeing that large a number in there for Skywalk, but maybe I would, maybe I'm.
I think we were.
I'll send that out.
Yeah.
So these dollars aren't coming from funds designated for connect downtown, are they?
No.
It's the same.
It, it's the same thing for it. I mean, that's what we would use for connect.
Plan graphics that is.
Yeah.
So we don't design ourselves into a corner. How do we serve or access the south portion of this site? Is there a Skywalk route planned through the garage today?
That, that is one of the challenges. There isn't. So the, the, the building, the development was designed so that the route was through the building. So actually you, so that's, that's a good, great question because it actually, it causes me to point out one thing that we had to add. So if you look on all, all these, we had to add a stair, a staircase. If you could kind of see the elevators in the lower center of the graphic, say for option two, right to the south of them, we're adding a staircase that would go down through the garage because you can't, there's not a pedestrian path between the elevators and the stairwell in the northeast corner of the garage. So there is not a east-west corridor.
So when the stairs connected, will we be able to access the undeveloped portion south of the garage through this length that we're building?
No. There, there's not a walkway north-south either, right?
So how is?
You'd have to walk through the garage.
Building serviced by a Skywalk?
It, it, it wouldn't be. It would not be. You'd have to walk through the garage essentially.
Poor planet.
That doesn't work.
Well, but they could have designed, the garage should have been designed for a Skywalk or inside the garage.
Was the south building ever part of the Skywalk system before?
Um, well, but.
It had, it had that, yeah.
It had all the, well, the garage went all the way over to the south portion of the lot.
No, it was connected to that Penny's and then the, the, where, because my friend had his.
Right.
In the barber shop, yeah.
Yeah, when it was JCPenney's, it was connected to the, yeah.
And it went straight, it went, you were able to connect it straight through and then it connected through the whole system.
Yeah.
Right. But this doesn't really solve the problem that council.
I'm, I'm only asking because, and I don't know, I've never been in this garage, but if the deck on the Skywalk level is flat, you can take parking stalls out for corridor. But are we impacting that by putting the stair here? I'm getting into the weeds. I, my recommendation is look at future access to a Skywalk to the south undeveloped portion of the site so we don't design ourselves.
Okay. Yep. Thank you. Yeah, that's why we have to put this.
Does any of these work? I mean, I, I don't see, I mean.
That's.
Option number three is not an option because right now I don't think we own that property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. My, my only, and again, I'm getting into the weeds.
The longest distance for the?
When the Skywalk is designed on option two, which seems to be the most reasonable to me, um, design it so we have easy connectivity. I know we've been making a big push to have glass from the Skywalk into the building. When you look at the Marriott, that was one of the first Skywalks to be built. And at that time, that had to be a two-hour firewall. So when you walk along the Marriott, you're looking at the concrete wall. The Skywalk ordinance was changed to allow glass into the building from the Skywalk so it's a much more friendly and interactive experience. And we have the opportunity to hear, you know, if there's retail on that second floor to have a lot of glass access. So when this bridge is designed, we should, I think, think about how do we open that up in the future?
The biggest question I have about option two, I mean, I think the pedestrian experience where you have a structure overhead that it, like, we're creating connectivity here, but potentially at the expense of, at the expense of the pedestrian experience in this area. I mean, I know a lot of folks have discomfort when they are walking under a structure. And here you would be creating, it's only a half a block, but it's, it's like walking under a structure for half a block.
Josh, if I may, we have some of those examples and around the Marriott is one example. But the difference is at the Marriott, there aren't columns. They're cantilevered off the building during construction of that building. And, and the, if you were to look up, it's pretty darn high. But because there are columns here, I would agree. It's, it's, it's a visual obstruction.
Yeah.
And the second floor wouldn't be as high here, I wouldn't guess, as it is at Marriott, just as the first, those.
It, it's gonna, I'm trying to think, but when I walk on the street in this area, I don't walk the Marriott block. And maybe that was, I, I don't know why, but I can't, I can't even remember the last time and I walked a number of the other blocks.
And I, and unfortunately, the columns, in my opinion, are, for option one, are the biggest impediment. I mean, we can make code work, but it, it would be tight when we look at. I mean, we can make code work, but it, it would be tight when we look at, if you really look at where, for example, in the middle picture, which would be the southwest corner of Walnut and Fifth, those columns right there, I mean, that's a really tight, that's making the sidewalk really tight there. And there are utilities in the area as well. So, that would be a challenge as well, I mean, to try and get this to work.
Steve, going back to the floor plans again, what's desirable about option two, assuming the elevations of the building across the street are manageable? I don't know. Will, will there be a ramp in this corridor? Because we would definitely want to provide access to the future building to the north through this corridor. So that-
Yeah, in the corner.
People don't have to go all the way down to the garage and then-
Right.
Come back in.
Right.
Well, couldn't we actually remove the north-south piece when the construction of the north side is done?
Potentially.
With an internal corridor.
Yeah. I mean, that, that was, I mean, in theory, that was the design of the old building, was you would, you would take out the walls or the elevator and, and go north-south through that building, but-
Or does- Or do you wait till you get that building built to do it correctly?
To eliminate it.
To, so you're not, I mean, we need to get the development done. That would be, to me, more critical and then do it where we're not having to redo anything.
And build a Skywalk corridor inside-
Right.
Future building.
Right.
And figure out how to get to the south building, doggone it.
I mean, the problem is that-
Right.
We didn't have, this kind of got sidelined. It would have been done properly, but it's, if we believe in Skywalk systems, we want to make sure we have the best connectivity that we can. And I think we're trying to put something together to, which I think that building's important. The big building is important. But if we could get this other plan done, or whatever that might be, and-
Connie, do we have a legal obligation-
That's-
Provide a Skywalk corridor into this garage for that 515 tower? Or any other user?
The city, well, the city ordinance is there for the vert, the accessible vertical access. So, we're, but I'm not sure on the, on the, there's, it sounds like there's not a legal obligation for the tower. But-
So, the Capitol Square, okay. So, there is from the new apartment into Capitol Square?
Yes, there will be connectivity.
That they could go from there. If anything, then you could go that kind of way.
I think it's more of, of the appeal of, I guess I would, well, it's, I mean, when would development occur in the north lot? And then, two, would this, I guess the question of, would it help pay for itself to do this if you could get the parking from the north tower? Or from the tower in the northwest corner? Because that would be, I mean, I think about when I lived in an apartment downtown, I didn't want my wife walking, you know, through the rain with groceries, you know, whatever she's carrying, groceries or walking kids to. So, that's an appealing thing to connect to that tower, but-
I think the deal is, is if we're committed that whenever we get this development, that we do it where we can do it in a systematic way. That would make, I mean, I think we're trying to work around something that we don't know about. I mean, I don't mind having them walking under, but I, I just think if we would ever have to change it again before. But that's-
I'm in, I'm in, I'm in the camp that we should solve it when development happens and solve it right. But I'm also conscious of the fact that we, we haven't let very many developers around downtown out of these rules. So, I would want to do it in a way that didn't, um, didn't create problems over the next couple of years as we waited for development to happen there with other developers. I, I think, I think if we, if the city was dealing with a private developer, we'd probably require a timeframe for it to be set in or a, a trigger mechanism. And if development didn't happen, we'd solve, you know, they'd be forced to solve it. Like if we were dealing with a third party, and I think it would be appropriate that the council adopt some, you know, self-governance policy that this is our plan so that when, when and if any other developers come in and say, well, easy for you to say, I have to do it, you didn't do it yourself.
We have extraordinary circumstances, though. That property's tied up in ports.
I, I think, I think those are the kinds of things that I would say would be our policy for why we would not subject us to that right now, but down the road, we would.
Steve, could we have the architect look at future Skywalk connectivity to the south parcel? Through the garage or? We should know.
Yeah. Yep.
Did we do it ourselves or did we hire an architect to look at? We did in-house, we did, your staff.
So, we, yeah, we hired the team to, Substance, to help us with this study. We did not do the, the developments. That was done by a private. We, we could ask them to help us look at the, the design of the garage.
What it would be if there was a development there?
Yeah.
And how we could, because at the end of the day, the cost could be, you know, if you have a whole nother development, then the cost gets equalized out. And it's a better connectivity, if it's a better way to connect. And now, we just got to find somebody that wants to develop that piece of property once it gets untied up.
I did want to just, we, we did look at in terms of, you know, if, if there was a decision to move forward with a connection, this, we can do a timeline that would align with the residential tower, right? To minimize, to try and coordinate since Fifth and Walnut is closed, now would be the time to do this with the residential tower. And so, you can see here, here's a schedule that should we bring forth, say, a, a construction manager at risk agreement in October, we could get this, this Skywalk connection done in mid-'27, which is the same time as the residential tower. So, again, trying to avoid, to be honest, the scenario of the residential tower is done in mid-'27, and then let's say we want to do this, and then now the intersection's closed for another-
Two years.
Two years after the tower, because that it closed for two years.
Steve, may we conclude with a little humor for the benefit of Councilperson Gatto. Could you remove the words "change orders"?
Well, and that, the stars are, are just to show where checkpoints would be in order that you would all see if we move forward with this. So, yeah.
Is there more input? Or he wants to digest some of this? Because we have four or five weeks if the decision were to have it coordinated to be available at the same time the tower is completed.
We're on a timeline, so I, I think everybody has the information. I think there's concerns about how we make it fit totally within the dynamics of what could be. And if it's better to postpone, that we get a better layout. Because I think we are trying to fit something into what we have currently that might not be. I'm just saying, I think it could be additional and it could be not as good of a fit. Is that what I'm hearing?
Permanent solution. You know, three or four years down the road, we'd say, really? Why did we do that?
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, this, that was a lot to digest. I'm not ready to-
Yeah, so I think what do we, we can circle back around.
Spend $2.6 million on this thing.
And that's fair.
A lot of money. And yeah, I hear, well, we can pay for it with TIF, but that's still tax dollars. That's still money that belongs-
There are other options.
Of this city.
Yes.
And there, to me, there are other options that we could be doing.
My concern is the future. It's, we're trying to fit something in and reconfigure based on what we know now, which might not be in three or four years. That would be my take on it, is that. But if, we can digest and have more conversations.
You know, to Councilman Westgar-
Within the next couple of years.
Other priorities that you, we still need to hear.
Yeah.
I still need to hear from you with some other priorities that I feel like that we need to talk about other than connecting to a parking garage.
Well, a parking garage that we don't know if it's really going to fit right in the long run.
Right. That has, you know, 32% occupancy.
Scenarios. I appreciate the work that's gone in to try to fit it as we, we have a strength of Skywalks within the downtown area. But I think in this case, we're trying to fit something because of what was incomplete to begin with for that whole project. So, on Fifth and the other side.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.